Counsel, if you will come to order. It is January the ninth, 7:01 PM. We do have a quorum. Councilmember Fleury is absent tonight with a family issue, so we have excused her. In just a moment, I'll ask everyone to stand and we'll be led in our opening prayer by Senior Minister Reverend Edlin Cowley of Fellowship United Methodist Church here in Trophy Club, and remain standing by being led in the pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag by Councilmember Kirch. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you so much for the blessing of this day, this day we've never seen before, this day that was not promised to us. We thank you for the newness of this year. We also thank you for the newness of this beautiful building that has been provided. God, we are also thankful on this law enforcement appreciation day. We are so thankful for those who serve our city and our area, and we thank you for those men and women who give themselves in such an intimate and personal way. And God, we pray that your Spirit will be in this meeting tonight as the work of the town gets done, and so we just ask for your presence. This is in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Tim?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, one justice, liberty, and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
We may be seated. Well, this is only our first meeting.
I thought we were looking at that way.
I said council will stand and place those flags.
And I'm the only one that remembered.
You're the only one that remembered.
I asked specifically started doing that.
I thought it was just Eric, and then I looked around and I'm like, what? Well, I don't want to be the Kaepernick or anything.
You know, we're habitual, I think, you know, we'll have to figure out what we're really supposed to do. And Edlin, thanks very much for saying the prayer tonight and for remembering our law enforcement people. So I'm in blue tonight, and Greg is in blue, and Phillip is in blue.
Sorry.
Surely there's blue other places, but citizens are in blue. Good. Chief Arada, thank you so much for what you do.
He's not in blue.
He's not in blue.
No.
Well, okay, it's a dark, really dark. Thank you so much for what you did. This time, it is good, it is time in our agenda for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes, our time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. I don't see anyone signed up. Anyone in the audience wish to speak at this time? Seeing no one seeking the floor, we will move on to our announcements and reports. Item number one, receive town manager class's update and provide input regarding the following. May 5th, 2018 election and town facilities. Mr. Class.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to start by announcing that on January 17th is the opening day for residents to file for their application for a place on the Trophy Club Town Council, May 5th ballot, and that will be for Councilmember Place Number Three and Councilmember Number Place Number Four. The official filing period ends on February 16th, and applications can be obtained through our Town Secretary Holly Fimbres. With regard to an update on the town facilities, I wanted to just briefly take you through where we are on some of the facility matters that we have. The Town Hall did receive a certificate of occupancy on December 13th. Town staff is now beginning our fifth month, actually, here in the building. Time's gone very fast. Transition's gone exceptionally well, and staff continues to work with our contractor on minor issues that you might expect in any new construction project. Things are going very well. Town staff continues to maintain the former Town Hall and Police Facility. We're using it primarily to store furniture, equipment, and also for records retention at this point. Based on previous council direction, we anticipate within the next month that representatives from the Rockport City Staff will be coming up to Trophy Club to pick up some of the furniture items that you also graciously offered for donation to them in support of the Hurricane Harvey efforts. Been in contact with the city manager in Rockport on a number of occasions, and they're just working through some of the details of getting up here, and we've assured them that our staff will be prepared to help them get loaded and sent back down south with our items. With the onboarding of our new facilities manager, we're also implementing a new call ticket system here, similar to what we use with our IT department to maintain all the facilities here in town. And then I wanted to talk with you a minute about park staff has been performing routine maintenance in the off-season on the pool and splash pad. For the first time this, in the history that I'm aware of, we've actually had the staff remove the furniture items and several of the other items from the splash pad. We've got them housed inside the facility now, keeping them out of the elements, and we hope that that's going to assist with their useful life. First time that we've got the pool that's being completely maintained over this winter, and it's going to not require us to drain the pool this year. We'll be saving water, and we'll also not have to power wash, save some money that way. Staff's also handling all the splash pad and pool painting projects this year in-house. That's the first time that we've done that, and it's going to have us avoid contracting those services out as we've done in the past, and we expect that we'll have some cost savings with that as well. Barring any unforeseen issues, the refurbishment of the Independence Park restrooms should be complete by the end of January. And then with regard to our streets, last week, TNP held a bid opening for the Indian Creek and Phoenix Drive Projects. They're currently evaluating the bids, and we expect that they'll make a presentation to staff sometime this week. We anticipate placing this on the council agenda either on the 27th of this month or potentially February 13th, and we hope to begin this project late spring. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Tom. We will move to item two. Receive council, Town Council Liaison Update, Discussion of Same. Park and Recreation Board, November 20th, 2017. Council liaison is Phillip Schaffner, and he already told me that there was no report and no meeting to report on. So we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items three through five? Hearing no one, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items three through five. Make a motion, we approve consent agenda items three through five. Second. It was moved by Mayor Pro Tem Rowe and seconded by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Item three, consider and take appropriate action regarding the Town Council regular session minutes. Oh, wait a minute, those were those items, I'm sorry. Item six, consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of gratitude for the service of Renee Gonzalez and provide an effective date. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Rowe to read proclamation 2018-01.
Thank you, sir. A proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing the retirement of Renee Gonzalez and honoring her for over 26 years of outstanding service to the Town of Trophy Club, whereas the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, wished to express their sincere gratitude to Renee Gonzalez for her invaluable service to the Town of Trophy Club, and whereas Renee served the Town of Trophy Club, the Trophy Club Fire Department, and the citizens of Trophy Club with over 26 years of commendable dedication, and whereas town staff considered Renee a leader within the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, a friend, and someone always having the best interest of the Town of Trophy Club in mind, and whereas Renee's fiscal responsibility and work ethic serve as an exceptional example for all Town of Trophy Club employees, and whereas Renee's service to the Town of Trophy Club and the Trophy Club Fire Department was exemplary and worthy of special notice, and whereas Renee Gonzalez retired from the district on December 20th, 2017, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Trophy, Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas hereby express their heartfelt gratitude to Renee Gonzalez for her exemplary service to the town, passed and approved by Town of Trophy Club, Texas, this ninth day of January 2018.
I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
I move that we approve proclamation number 2018-01.
Do you have a second? Moved by Rowe, seconded by Schaffner. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Renee, if you would come to the podium. Here is the proclamation. I want to thank you so much for all that, I'll try to shake with this thing, you just don't move it much.
Don't.
Thank you so much for all the service you gave to Trophy Club. Place this way, we'll get one picture this way, and then we're going to go over here. Let's go over here, get a picture. Counsel.
Is it? Oh, I mean, over there.
Paul's crying. It's okay.
Cruel.
You know, Renee goes back to when at least half of the employees were joint employees of both the utility district and the town, and so she was in accounting, and she did the books and paid the bills and all that for both entities. So, ton of institutional knowledge. We've kind of gotten over that at this point, because you've been totally with the mud for several years, but I'm not sure they're going to be over yet. So, lot of institutional knowledge there that's lost, but thank you very much for your service. Thank you. Item number seven, receive an update from town staff regarding municipal court operations. Mr. Phillips?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right. At the request, request of Councilmember Schaffner, we wanted to bring forward, I think this was done, this was done a few years back, so we wanted to provide a brief update on the municipal court operations here in the town. We're going to, this is going to be kind of a joint presentation tonight between myself and Terry Neal, the senior court clerk. So, I'm going to kick this off for you. As you're probably all very familiar, municipal court is the judicial branch of the municipal government and has the power to hear Class C misdemeanors and impose fines. The jurisdiction of the municipal court here in the Town of Trophy Club is the town, corporate town limits of Trophy Club and the Marshall Creek Park. So, examples of, of, I'm sorry, examples of violations that, that you may see in the municipal court, traffic violations, parking violations, Class C misdemeanors, as I mentioned earlier, town code enforcement type violation, and then school truancy violations as well. Here at Town Hall is the location of the municipal court, and so plea, attorney, juvenile, pretrial, and show cause court dockets are held on the fourth Wednesday of every month, and the jury and bench trials are set as required, and we do those occasionally. I believe we have one coming up this spring. Talk to you a little bit about revenues. As you can see, going back to fiscal year 15, the revenues stay somewhat stable as far as the fines and fees go. The fiscal year 16 numbers were pretty aggressive. Fortunately, we met those numbers as far as revenues go, but we have looked at the budgeting a little more conservatively in the out-years. One question that probably sticks in your mind by looking at this chart is fiscal year 15, we see this huge number, this $31,288. Doing some further investigation and talking with our finance folks, what happened there, there was a $27,000 transfer from some bond, some bond receipts that we had, and they were misclassified as a liability, so that was more of a true-up there in 15. And so the out-years looking forward, you can see it kind of fluctuates between the, the $4,000, $5,000 range. We feel like that that's pretty accurate. That child safety fee again is just for any violations that occur in a school zone, passing a bus, anything that can be attributed back to public safety for schoolchildren here in the community.
And all of that, I'm sorry, all of that has to go to the crossing guard program? Is that true? I think in a further slide, it says that.
Right, yeah, well, exactly.
Jumping ahead.
That's all right. We're getting there. So where does the money go? I'm going to ask Terry Neal, our senior court clerk, to come up and explain some of the intricacies between the division of revenues that we see from the state and the local level.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us tonight. Pleasure to be here and share court with you.
Would you pull the microphone a little towards you?
Sorry.
That's good.
Okay. And so what we're looking at here is the chart of court costs. There are about three elements that go into what makes up a whole fine that the defendant actually pays. First of all, it's the fine that the judge sets for that offense, and then there are state costs and state fees that go into that whole bulk that the defendant would pay. In addition to that, city ordinance, we have a $3 security fund and a $4 technology fund on every case that is disposed. So those funds are dedicated in separate accounts, you know, respectively for security measures for the court and also for technology upgrades for the court. And, you know, things like the panic buttons in the council chambers and courtroom slash courtroom, so that money is well-used and only used for those purposes. Now, there's been some questions about the difference of the fines, and like on code enforcement, you're looking at about $60 that goes to the state. And on moving violations, rules of the road, it's $99.10 for every fine that's paid. So if the defendant has a fine that's $200, $99.10 of that goes to the state for various and sundry things that they have set up, like the consolidated court cost is $40 of every fine, and then they have the jury fee and the indigent defense fund, and it's been quite some time since the OCA or the state has raised any of the fines. The last thing that we had was the 10 cent conviction fee, of which we get one penny of, and the state gets nine cents. So, thank goodness, we have court software that figures all that out for us and calculates everything. Now, on the education code, they pretty much took that and put that back into the schools, and so we don't see very many truancy tickets anymore in the municipal courts. And prior to that, most of that was held in the justice courts anyway. The parking and pedestrian offenses are not under the rules of the road, and so there's just the, if you look up here in the JSF fee and the indigent defense fund, those six, two, and two are going into, so if somebody gets a $50 parking ticket, then it ends up being about 70. So those 3 AM to 5 AMs that we've seen some of lately are $70. The state child safety fund, like Jonathan told us, it goes towards offsetting the school crossing guards and public safety to keep everybody safe in the mornings and the afternoons when school lets out. The, you can see the breakdown here on this next chart that Jonathan flipped over for us. All of these are the different costs that the state imposes. And over to the right, Councilmember Lamont had some questions today about us keeping 90% of the consolidated court costs and 10%, I mean, us keeping 10% and 90% going to the state. But this column right here, these divisions and percentages of what stays here and what goes to the state are actually only contingent on us filing our quarterly report timely. And on the quarterly report, when we run that and we get it submitted by January 31st, we automatically get all those percentage of discounts where we don't have to pay them the full amount that we collected for them. So that's how that works. It was kind of interesting this year with the 85th legislature. We're a kinder, gentler court now. We, ever since the events that happened in Missouri, in Ferguson, Missouri, has changed the way that we look at, at the way that defendants are treated and watchdog groups that have been out to El Paso and Austin, and thank goodness, you know, that we've never had those kind of problems in our court. But the 85th legislature was about crisis and security. Judge Curasek was shot in her driveway in Austin, and so that introduced Senate Bill 42. And so the judge now heads up our security, our courthouse security committee, and Jonathan and Lieutenant Shields and Detective Jenny Whiskey, Detective Jay, is part of our courthouse security. We've already had our first meeting, and we've determined there's a few things that we need to look at before court starts, such as our closets and things like that, so we want to be in compliance. Also, we have to pay to have a certified bailiff now. Fortunately, Lieutenant Shields found a program that her and the detective are going to in Rowlett that is free, although we did budget some money for that, you know, to make sure that we had that covered, because they have to be certified bailiffs, even though they're certified police officers, they have to be certified bailiffs by the end of September. So we look forward to that. Also, with this kinder, gentler feelings and mindset about court, a defendant can at any time say that they are indigent or that they need to pay just a portion of their fine, whereas before, the state always wanted their full amount. We could do whatever we wanted to with the fine. So now the state's on the same level with us, and all of the fines, fees, and costs can be waived for indigent defendants or, you know, in lieu of community service to meet their obligations to the board. So, the, I think Jonathan kind of wanted to talk about the, the expunction.
Terry, before you finish, we had Councilmember Schaffner who wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. She can finish.
Okay, you'll ask it later, all right.
We have a place for questions here at the end. If you want to retain them till the very end, then I'll be happy, or Jonathan will be happy to answer them. Well, starting this year, we can do expunctions, and an expulsion is where a defendant has been found not guilty or acquitted, and they can get that removed from their record. Normally, that has always been done in justice courts or district courts or county courts. So now we're able to do that, yay. We don't get paid anything for doing that. The expulsion fee is $100 to the petitioner, so we do get that. But there is enormous amount of paperwork that goes to that, because you have to notify the FBI and get everything out of NC, what is that, chief, NCI? NCI, yeah. And so everything has to be completely, I'm surrounded by police here. So everything has to be completely expunged from their records. And so that works for us with our Class C misdemeanors for like minor possession, minor MIPs, MICs, minor consumption, possession of drug paraphernalia, things that would totally be life wreckers for young people that make a mistake. And so, you know, that's the mindset we all want to have, is that we want to make sure that people make it through to adulthood with, with being able to find jobs and get student loans and go to college. On the security side of things, that Senate Bill 42, courts that take civil cases that they want to have expunged civilly, civil cases only get to charge $5. Unfortunately, in municipal court, the only civil action that we ever have are dangerous dog hearings or judgment NICEs, bond forfeitures. So that's like no money for revenue for the court. But anyway, so, oh, collections, that's my favorite part. Collections is very important, because not only are the officers out there protecting us and providing public safety to our citizens and the people that pass through our community, they, it's disrespectful to them if a person does not pay their fine. It's not fair and equal justice. If I pay my ticket, then certainly someone else should pay their ticket. And so we have a really good collection process that we use here at the Town of Trophy Club. About three days after their fine becomes due, then I start making courtesy calls, and after about three weeks, they get a letter, and with this new legislative update, they have to actually come to court into a show cause hearing if they fail to appear, before any type of warrant can be issued for their arrest. So at that point, we've just now started that with this court session we're having on the 24th, but prior to that, I would turn the cases over to Officer Sears, who fortunately is here with us tonight, and she is our warrant officer, and there's just something different about getting a phone call from the court clerk and something different about getting a phone call from a police officer. So she's been a tremendous help to get the people to come in, let us set up payment plans or do community service or whatever to resolve their problems. So she's tireless in her efforts, and we certainly do appreciate her in the court. And so now, Councilmember Schaffner, what did you have in mind?
The reason that I asked for this is I came across a great article that basically laid out, you know, what, where money goes where, and I didn't think that we had ever really been given an understanding of the allocation of money, and I think oftentimes, we either see it on Facebook or we get hit with questions, you know, either you're not patrolling enough, which I'm sure Chief gets, or if you are patrolling, you're just after revenue. And so I think that what, what I was, what I was looking for, and I appreciate you taking the time to do this, but certainly what I was looking for is the allocation, and, and to show that, you know, when we patrol on Trophy Club Drive or Indian Creek, the state's going to get their portion, and what's left over, I guess, goes to the town or how it's allocated, so I just, I don't think people have an understanding. They just think that we patrol the streets and we collect all the money, and that's, that's not necessarily the case.
No.
So.
And in fact, I've heard that a couple of times at the window.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But you have to think about, our fines are not very high. In fact, I noticed when I first started here, I went back to 2015, and there was a comparison of the fines from the different areas, and that's how the judge usually sets the fine, is what are they doing in Westlake? What are they doing in Justin? What are they doing in Northlake? You know, we compare it to the area around us. And our fines are very much in line and possibly a little bit lower on some things than the other cities are. And also, I think if you've noticed the police blotter, that many, many, many more warnings are given than tickets in our town, and I think that's great, community policing and, and, you know, occasionally we'll have someone who is disgruntled about, and they'll say, oh, well, you built this on our fine money, you know?
Right, right.
No. But, you know, they have to understand that it's public safety, and they do. Usually when they leave, they're happy, and they're more or less aggravated and disgruntled with themselves about the money that they have to pay, because... with themselves about the money that they have to pay because usually when you get a ticket, you're thinking about your grocery list or something, you're not concentrating on how fast you're driving, so. But I hope I've answered your question, that the money goes into the general fund and it is spread out over many programs. Now, the fifty-dollar warrant fee that Roseanne collects for each one of the tickets that are delinquent goes directly to the police department for them to use for their programs that they need to, you know, help maybe with at the school or whatever they need. So, you know, I mean, that doesn't even go into the general fund anymore. So I don't know how to really explain to people about court revenue.
Yeah.
What do you tell them?
It was, you know, I think this was helpful. I, I certainly did not know about the, if, if there's fines in a school zone that that goes to the crossing guard program, which, which I think is a good thing. And, and so I think that, that this was helpful. I appreciate you doing it.
Well, and we apologize too. Judge Chambers was planning on, on addressing you as well this evening, but as you, I assume you saw from his letter and, and his presentation that he wasn't available tonight, so.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you both of you for doing that. We'll move on to item eight, discussion and provide direction to town staff regarding options for technology, technology enhancements in the town council chambers. Jonathan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Wanted to bring this item forward as staff was asked to research technology options for enhancements here in the council chambers. One of the suggestions that came up before us was to look at iPads at the individual seats there on the dais and potentially iPads at the, at the two desks for staff. iPads were suggested simply for the iOS purposes of supporting apps that are in iOS. As part of that discussion too, there was talk of the potential of issuing iPads to council members as we go through this process. None of these items were, were budgeted in the IT budget and so Mr. Class mentioned that, you know, one local, one source of funding for this item would be his town manager's contingency fund. So simply a moving target here, we, we looked at some kind of mid-level type of solutions for the, the iPads. Our recommendation is, is simply that is, would be seven iPads. We looked at the fifth gen, their one hundred and twenty-eight gig wifi only with a nine-point-seven inch screen. Our thought was that we would actually have them placed at the dais, not on a necessarily permanent installed basis, but using the examples that we provided this evening, of some sort of a mount that could be wired in, that would already be set up to the wifi. Any updates would be, would be taken care of advance of your meeting. And so we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, anyone forgetting a, a device or anything like that. There would, there would be seven of them at each of your meetings, ready to go when you walked in the door. Of course, with that option, as you can see tonight, those, those mounts can be moved to either left or right, forward or backwards to accommodate whatever is comfortable for each council member. Just again, based on a moving target, looking at kind of a similar configuration as we have tonight, to outfit seven positions would be approximately four thousand dollars. If we wanted to add more, then we could just extrapolate that out to additional six positions down here on the seats. Again, as another part of this conversation was looking at the same iPads, again, the fifth gen, the one twenty-eight gig, take home for each council member if they so desired. We would outfit them with a screen protect, screen protector in tough case, not that we would ever have any issues, but just in case, there, there might be a drop or a spill or something. Cost is a little lower, thirty-seven hundred dollars based on this model, and that's simply because it doesn't involve the, the mount or the pedestal there. You know, iPads are definitely not the only option. They may not even be something that you're interested in. Other options that, that we could come up with were, I've seen council chambers outfitted with touchscreens. A lot of times that's done to interface with maybe a voting system or some sort of agenda management system throughout the council meeting. Another option too would be similar to what we have here at the dais, at the podium, sorry, is this tilt mount, low profile monitor that we could outfit with some sort of a connection to be able to display your device on the, on the monitor itself. So again, really tonight, we're just looking for some feedback, some direction, how you'd like us to move forward and, and once we get that, we're, we're ready to go. Be happy to answer any questions.
Chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tim Rowe for a question.
Yeah, so a couple of thoughts I had about this. I think that, I think that the, being able to use the iOS device to request to speak and the, the application that we've been working on for that is, is of an advantage. I also think if we can, if we can see what's on the presentation, I think those are two valid uses. I will say, I would recommend getting the thirty-two gig model rather than the one hundred and twenty-eight gig model. You can save a hundred dollars a unit and, which is not insignificant when you're talking about a four hundred and twenty-nine versus three twenty-nine. This is my five-year-old laptop work computer where I've got, I've got code on here, I've got music on here, I've got pictures on here, I've got everything in the world on here and it's a hundred and twenty-eight gigs and I've still got room. So for something that's only going to be at the dais during meetings, thirty-two is plenty. So, but yeah, I, I think that's, I think that would, that would be of, of good value to us in these meetings. I don't have any desire for a take-home device though, and that's all I got.
And just to expand on that, we do have the, part of the technology in this room is we have a, a software called Via, it's a Via Connect and we have it in the conference rooms as well. Sorry. And so it's called, and the device in here is called Via Collage. And so actually what it does would send the, the presentation out to each device instead of just one location. So, so it does work out well for that.
All right, Philip Schaffner, question?
Yeah, I agree with Roland. I, I think that if you, if you go to like a voting system that is proprietary, I think then you limit yourself to just that item. And as technology advances, you're stuck with that same voting system. And I, I think that it certainly, I mean, the app that we're using here was done by a guy in Dublin, so I, I, I think that eventually I could get him or even somebody else to, to do a voting app that is tied in with this as well. And so I think with, with the iPads, we, we can go with technology. And I agree with Roland that I don't, I don't personally need one to take home, but I, I certainly would rather forego that cost and, and have one at each of the staff locations. I think that that would be good because they're as tied into this app as we are, so.
All right. And just because we have the nice sophisticated request to speak system, I will not bypass Greg Lamott who wants to speak.
For the first time.
Oh, we, it's going to be an option for each of us or we're just going to buy seven that we'll all use? Otherwise, I, I have iOS on my phone, I could punch it. To me, just buying another iPad for me is just somewhat of a waste of money. So is it going to be seven or none?
Well, I think that's what they're looking for, for direction. If you don't want one and you're willing to use your iPad or phone, then...
But you're saying the video collage will also go through soon. They have presentations, it'll go straight to the iPads.
But I think it'll go to your phone, right?
The other thing, I, I don't about taking them home, I just feel a little uncomfortable leaving them here at the, the dais. We could put them in the back room.
Sure, they'll take care of that.
Well, right. I mean, we, we'll take care of the security of the device here in the building. You know, I think that there may be other uses in this room for, for the equipment too. So as our town manager mentioned, you know, there, there's a possibility maybe P and Z or, or some other board or commission may want to use, hold their meetings in here. If they do, they may want to use the same setup that you guys have. That may be a reason to have seven regardless. If, we'll probably plan for seven because, you know, if, if, if your term limit ever expires and you're ever not in that chair, the person that's coming in behind you may like to have one.
Still sit out there.
Absolutely.
And break your shoes.
Absolutely. So, so we probably will plan for seven unless council tells us otherwise.
Schaffner?
Yeah, and that's, that's, you know, this app can be used for P and, just like you said, this app can be used for P and Z. And so I think if you're going to do it, you, you do it for each station. It can be used for Parks and Rec, it can be used for just, just any meeting in here. And so I think it looks consistent to do it for everybody.
So are you partly looking for, you may budget for seven, once we kind of prove that this concept works for us. If several council don't want one at their station, they're going to use their own device, you just want them to tell you that and you'll decide when you buy them. If you don't want to buy seven at this time, you buy whatever you need and buy others later if you need them.
Right. What, what we actually might do is we might buy seven, you know, always, we always want to have one in reserve in case there's an issue that we can swap one out quickly. If there's a council member that doesn't want to use one at their seat, we'll remove it.
Well, they don't have one, they can't talk.
There you go.
Just kidding. Doesn't mean I won't not see the screen, you know?
Right, right. Yeah, I would say the only thing, I would, I would be looking for the least amount of gigabytes you can get that you still get by on because, you know, a sixteen, I don't even know if they make a sixteen anymore, but they used to.
Sadly, it's two, yeah. Thirty-two's like...
Thirty-two's fine, yeah.
It's a big jump.
I don't want to take one home, just to let you know that. I think having it here at the dais is fine for right now. We can change that. I, I think I would like to be able to see the agenda and I could toggle through the agenda as opposed to the request to speak. That goes back to how do you distribute the agenda or how do we get it there to work those kinds of things.
You could pull it up on the Google Drive app on the, because before my old, old iPad got sold, that it didn't want to open up the three hundred page PDF anymore. That's what I used to use, was just that. So that's one other one. That's another convenience of using an iOS device rather than a proprietary system that you described on your last slide, is that the possibilities are as open as whatever's available in the App Store.
So if we get them to put the Google Drive app on here.
Sure, absolutely.
And that would help us get to that if we choose to do it that way. All right, anybody else, comments?
So what, so in summation, I'm hearing that, that council supports the seven devices at the dais. Obviously, the, it sounds like the consensus has been to go with the, the lower amount of memory at, like the thirty-two gig model. And that I haven't heard anyone mention that they'd like a take-home device.
No, but I would, I would, I would forego that and get staff. I think staff should have the six as well, you know, because they're part of...
It gives you some more money to work with staff. Just if you haven't been part of the discussions or heard things, one thought is that a citizen could actually download the app to their iOS device if they wanted to and say they want to speak. So we're working on that option.
Okay.
Now, the other side is they turn in that slip to Holly. And so if Holly has one of the devices, we're working on changes to the app to say, this person wants to request to speak. And so it, it kind of gives us better communications. If I'm trying to conduct the meeting, I can see who's in the queue and recognize them in order. For the citizens, that we start capturing that data.
Okay.
So now we have electronically captured who spoke on what item, that kind of thing.
That was going to be my question, is there, that some way it's being captured and then that way?
You know, we're still working and trying to figure out what's the best thing to do. For me, I like the fact that people request to speak. It sure helps me not skip over Greg because I don't see his hand and it keeps me from looking back and forth to see who wants to speak. So I think it works well in that endeavor as far as I'm concerned. So if they're, I think what I saw, they're not budgeted in this year's budget, but you have money in the town manager's fund. And so these two that we're playing with tonight, were those just ones that IT had or did we buy them or new or what?
Yes, one of them is the second generation. I believe Councilmember Schaffner has that, so it's fairly old. And that iPad, I believe was purchased recently for testing purposes for this item.
Okay.
So I, my understanding is we would have to purchase six more.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that, that shows you it's working fine, you know, so the app...
I could sell you four of my old ones, yeah.
My son has them.
I have, I have an old one that Linda has. I can use that for a minute to buy that. Okay. Anybody else, questions? Jonathan, I know you're not feeling well. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for preparing this tonight. Appreciate it. All right, item nine, discussion to take appropriate action regarding potential amendments to the town's Home Rule Charter for voter consideration at the May fifth, two thousand and eighteen election. Mayor Pro Tim Rowe first requested this item and I seconded to move along with it. Council, you have at your, at your station a copy of the Home Rule Charter as last amended. And so Roland, did you have anything specific you wanted to maybe discuss?
No, sir, no specific proposals for amendments. For those who aren't aware or familiar with the process, since we do operate under a Home Rule Charter per state law, we do have the ability to place ballot propositions on, on the amend, on the ballot for residents to vote on, but you can only do it every two years at most frequent. And it's been slightly over two years since we discussed it, knowing that the calling of election would be coming up pretty soon. It just triggered in my mind at the end of last meeting that we ought to have something on the agenda, but I personally don't have anything. I wonder if anyone else does.
I, I reviewed it over the weekend and did look at it. There are a couple of things that we might could discuss, but I don't think they're urgent and I haven't heard anybody saying that we have a problem. So we're a little bit under a sharp fuse here at this point to get it done in two weeks to be able to have the ballot wording for next meeting. So I don't think they're that serious, but it, a couple of items, I actually talked to a couple of other mayors about how they handled in their charter some of the unique issues that come up. One of them was, because our charter says, in order to run for another elected office, you must resign. And so Southlake, for instance, had away the fact that they could, council could give the exception to let them stay until the election happened. Obviously, the state dictates you can't hold two offices, but otherwise you'd have to file, you have to resign when you file. So that says you couldn't file early if you wanted to run for an office, if you wanted to stay on the council, or you had to resign right at the last minute prior to the election. So Southlake went through that in this last, last election cycle. So it was kind of interesting and as I read the charter, council has the authority to do things, it's just not specific as to what it says. So how would you deal with that if you wanted to, to take that particular issue and, and deal with it? So that was an interesting one that just by reading the charter and kind of thinking about what Southlake said, I'm going, oh, that is interesting that it's not handled very well now. So, and maybe there's some other issues like that. Roland, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, I hadn't thought about resigning to run at all because I have no aspiration to run for any office other than the chair my butt's currently sitting in, but I think that warrants future discussion. I mean, let's just say down the road, somebody wanted to run for county commissioner. Would the residents say, oh, no, for the next ninety days, you can't sit on city council? I mean, seems, I don't know, seems a little bit punitive to me if someone wanted to further try to, you know, serve the community or the county or whatever the case may be, I don't know, just a, just a quick, you know, just a quick thought I had there. But also I will note for, for staff purposes, the last few times there have been charter amendments on the ballot, most of them have come from staff recommendations. It's been a little cleanup of little things here and there. So if anything, if anything in the course of your work presents itself, just know that that option is available with each election cycle since we haven't done one. And we've crossed that threshold now and we can, we can have another election. So that's another thing to keep in mind as we move forward throughout the year and we could have it in November instead of May if we needed to or whatever.
Council, did you get any input from any citizen who asked why this was on the agenda or anything like that? Because nobody showed up to talk about it. So doesn't seem to be any group of citizens who are driving that issue. All right, if there's no more discussion, we will move on to item ten, discussion of items for future agenda and to include agenda items for consideration on the January twenty- on the January twenty-second of a council retreat. So, there are a couple of documents that you may want to look at, council. And page sixty of the packet is the tentative agenda for council retreat. Did anybody have a topic that you wanted to add that's not broadly defined here? Staff, anything else you got or anybody?
I'd like to add...
Greg?
I'd like to add something.
All right, Greg?
Discuss the purchase, implementation, and applying for possible grant money for the installation of security cameras at the entrance ways to Trophy Club and a police license plate reader for requirements such as registration, insurance, and stolen vehicles.
Did you get that?
Is there a second for that? I'll second.
To add it to this, we don't do seconds unless there's an objection.
Okay, well...
Does anybody object to talking about that? Well, I guess you'd need a second because council member can't add it on the agenda.
Correct, yeah.
Right, okay, good point.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right. So, we have Lamott wanting to place the item on the agenda for security cameras at the entrance and license plate readers and looking at a grant to obtain such thing. And it is seconded by council member Kurtz. All right, anybody else?
Mayor, I was gonna actually just hit you up, but Mayor Pro Tem Rowe is correct. I just put who requested this when Tom had asked for it initially. So, I just put that council member's name and I was gonna see if you were okay with me.
Okay. Well, has everybody had a chance to read down the list? Cuz there may not have been two. I know we had some discussion about health, healthcare cost and implementation. There seemed to be multiple people in favor of that, of talking about that.
I'll, I'll leave my name to all of them that are currently one through eight or two through eight, I guess. Or yeah, one through eight. Cuz, yeah, I think they're all at work discussing at the retreat. And my name's not already on any of them.
And so, we're scheduling the review of our town manager at this retreat. We'll go into executive session and have that function involved with that.
Is, is that the normal cycle?
Yeah, it has to be done. Tom?
Holly, correct me if I'm wrong. Again, the normal cycle, we, we did the, my review back in August, which met the requirements for the normal cycle. This is specifically to review the, my contract.
Yeah, but I, I, I thought that we changed all that up to review before the trigger date. You know, so whatever the contract said, we wanted to review before, because we've, we've, in the past, we've gotten kind of caught on that where if we wanted to pull the trigger, we couldn't because we, we were not within that. I think Tom's contract is different than that, though. I don't think that he has that. Does he have that sixty day? I, I, I meant to look at his contract for the meeting. But that's, that's...
Well, why don't we, for right now, we'll do a little research on that. There are two dates. You're right. One was if you were not gonna renew the contract, you had to take action.
Right, and so, we changed all, everybody's, everybody's used to when they did the review, it was either right before the election or right after. And they did everybody at, at the same time. It made no sense because if, if you were gonna take action, you couldn't because you were not within that sixty day window. And so, what we did is changed that to maybe two or three weeks before that trigger date. And so, that's what we need to look at.
And you are correct. I think this is something different. It's worded differently. I think it had been discussed. Evaluations at six months before the renewal. You are correct on that. I think this is something different for discussion.
Okay, I don't, I'm not familiar with this.
Yeah, the, the difference here is just the, the contract, the, my contract that we're talking about requires at the one-year mark, a review of the contract.
Okay, so that's a little...
It was specific for the first year, wasn't it?
Right.
All right. So, unless we find out contrary or unless we have some objection, we'll continue to plan that.
So, it's just purely a contract review, not a, not a review where we have to answer all those questions? Okay.
All right. And so, we had the one item that was added. So, I think at this point, if you, if you come across something, you still won't add it to this. It still could be in flux. You just need a second person to talk about it. I guess, I don't remember when I read this over the weekend, but intended to say something about probably just under the capital improvement item. There were some items about the building and the land here that we pulled from the budget. And it, it might be nice to at least have a discussion. Do you wanna consider any of those in more detail and therefore develop a budget for it? So, that would be something to, that, that I think maybe is worthwhile having a discussion if nothing else, nothing is added. But I know at one time, there was discussion about an electronic gate, an entry area for the police with fencing in that area. So, electricity was run, that kind of thing. Now, did we solve the size of the dog run? What happened about that? Do you remember, Philip?
We haven't done anything.
And what about the fact that the way the holding, animal holding area was done had the wrong kind of...
I think they're working on that.
Fences and stuff. Chief, any comment there?
We're in the, the process of doing a quote right now to have that all corrected.
Okay.
And so, we're just waiting on an updated one without taxes.
So, maybe it would be, it would be wise then for the, for the retreat agenda than to have a sort of a housekeeping items for town hall now that we, you know, we're in.
Just potential town hall, town hall projects.
Or in any kind of loose ends that are, that still need to be tied up. I don't think I'm gonna show up, wanna figure out how to spend money. But if there are things that we haven't talked about in a few months that we need to wrap up, we, would be wise to do so.
All right.
If I can interject, one other item that I'd like to consider placing on there would be a capital replacement program, funding enhancements. We've got some ideas on that item that we'd like to present to council. I'd like to add, be my intention anyways to add that to the agenda unless you don't have any objections to that.
You have the right to add anything to the agenda.
I understand.
We don't have to talk about it, but you can add. And if you don't have a way to request to speak, I guess you don't get to speak.
He does.
Oh, he has his device.
He went in front of me, you know, cuz I, I hit request.
Philip, you have, Philip, you have the floor.
One thing, and this could potentially fall under capital, capital programs, capital improvement. But I, I'd like to address, and I don't know if you're going, going to address this in the retreat, but kind of the street repair, in other words, where we're headed and maybe what you potentially wanna do, like, street panels, things like that. Because there, there's a, there's a couple of areas that I think need immediate attention that are, are pretty vital. And so, I'd like to talk about those at the retreat.
All right. I support that.
You second it.
All right. If nothing else at this time, we'll move on to pages sixty-one through sixty-two, which is our tentative agenda for the February thirteenth. Council should have seen an email from Alicia that talked about a proclamation naming February twenty eighteen as Kindness Month. So, I get, I didn't get a chance to talk to her about that, but that was what she was requesting in writing. And it could go on the February thirteenth. They do want something done by February twenty-seventh. I mean, maybe that's not the right day, but they do want something done to coincide with what they're doing with a program for Kindness Month with the school district. Did, I don't remember. That went to mayor and council, so, Tom, you should've gotten a copy of that.
I did.
Alicia's not here, but let's check with her about that. And either, either we do it at the council retreat or we do it at this first meeting in February. So, I made that note. Did anybody else have anything? All right. And then if you'll turn to page sixty-three and sixty-four, that's our future agenda list. And item one and two will just continue right now. And item three, we're gonna be discussing at our retreat. So, that takes care of that item unless somebody has a change to that. All right. So, Roland, I think I finished everything except executive session and beyond. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Got that? All right. And so, in just a minute, after I read about the executive session, we will adjourn over to the council executive conference room. Pursuit to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter five-five-one, Texas Open Meetings Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, Section five-five-one oh-seven-four Personnel Matters under subsection one to discuss or deliberate the appointment, evaluation, and duties of a public officer and employee. Annual review of the town secretary, Holly Fembres. Quarterly goals and objectives for council-appointed employees. Annual Shelter Advisory Board, where we have a vacancy and we need to take action on those appointments and actions. And item four, Economic Development Corporation four-B. Once again, we have a vacancy that we have to deal with and have done interviews. And the TERS one, we have a vacancy and need to take action on an appointment there. Item B, Section five-fifty-one oh-seven-one Consultation with Attorney under subsection two to consult with the town attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, specifically one pending litigation, litigation. And item two, Personnel Procedures and Authorities, which is another part of that area. So, it is eight oh-three and we will convene into executive session. Council, take a break if you need to before we do that. Council will come to order. We will reconvene into regular session and it is nine forty-six. And we are on item twelve. Consider to take appropriate action repealing Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty and adopting a new resolution filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term on the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, reaffirming existing appointments, chairperson, and council liaison and providing an effective date. Chair would recognize council member Jensen for a motion.
I make a motion to repeal Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty and approve Resolution number twenty eighteen dash oh-one, appointing Kristen Dobson to place three, filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term on the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, reaffirming existing appointments, chairperson, and council liaison, providing an effective date of January ninth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
I have a motion by council member Jensen, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Rowe. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Item thirteen. Consider to take appropriate action repealing Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine and adopting a new resolution filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term on the Economic Development Corporation four-B, reaffirming existing appointments and council liaison and providing an effective date. I'll recognize council member Jensen for a motion.
I make a motion to repeal Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-nine and approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash oh-two, appointing Chris Whipple to place six, filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term on the Economic Development Corporation four-B, reaffirming existing appointments and council liaison and providing an effective date of January ninth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Council member Jensen made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Rowe seconded. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. No oppose, it is unanimous. Item fourteen. Consider to take appropriate action repealing Resolution twenty seventeen dash three-oh and adopting a new resolution filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term and appointing a chairperson on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone number one, reaffirming existing appointments and providing an effective date. Would recognize council member Jensen for a motion.
I make a motion to repeal Resolution twenty seventeen dash thirty and approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash oh-three, appointing Sean Bone to place two, filling one vacant position for the remainder of an unexpired term and appointing Sean Bone to serve as chairperson of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone number one, reaffirming existing appointments and providing an effective date of January ninth, twenty eighteen.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by council member Jensen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Rowe. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. All right, item fifteen. Consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. I don't think there was any motion that we were gonna make. Anyone else wish to make a motion? All right, hearing no one. It is nine fifty PM and we are adjourned.
Holly, do you need any... It was from the motions.
That we make the changes to the contract of town secretary Holly Fembres as discussed in executive session.
You have a second? Jensen seconded. Any further discussion? Motion by Rowe, seconded by Jensen. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Motion carries. Okay, it is now nine fifty-two and we are adjourned for sure.